Okay, called this regular meeting of council to order, March 17th, 2020 here at the City Hall. We have two additions to the agenda, one 15-minute executive session for non-elected personnel regarding personal matters and one 10-minute executive session for non-elected personnel, again, about personal matters. Are there any other additions to the agenda?
Whoa. We're gonna combine any of those?
We might be able to combine.
Can we combine the...? No, we can't.
Okay.
Is it not? Well, I don't know. Is one of those that was added about higher?
No. Okay. Are there any other additions to the agenda? Okay, all in... Okay, I have a motion. Do I get a second? You have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, do we have any citizens' comments this evening? Okay, moving on. Consent agenda, approved minutes, regular council meeting, March 3rd, 2020. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Appropriation ordinance, 3-17-2020, in the amount of $33,089.27. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, moving on. Act 360 Insurance. Trey.
I'll pass these out again, guys, so you can take a look at these. It's not gonna look a whole lot different than the last one, but I did get with Jamie and we updated the vehicle and then there were some equipment, there were some property, not necessarily changes, but relocations of addresses and things that we needed to make sure were correct or labeled correctly, and so we did that. But there was a fair amount of equipment stuff that was added and that vehicle, so the premium did go up a little. So you guys can go... And then the second page we'll go over a little bit, it's the same as last time, but the premiums there are broken out per policy and then the totals there at the bottom. And that's a little bit of an increase from the first one. But it's exactly the way your current policy reads today in terms of coverage. I mean, in terms of what's being covered. So vehicles are all right, equipment's all there, property's all there, everything's there, and that's what was a little different than the first time around.
Trey, I had asked you just a little bit ago about our power plant, that it's covered for $8.5 million and whether that was enough coverage to replace it if it was completely destroyed.
Yeah. Yeah, so when I submitted this to get a quote, the property values since you guys have been with NPR have not changed. Typically, insurance companies will add a little inflation rider to keep up, so they'll increase property values 2% or 3% or 4% every year. NPR hasn't done that, which is fine, but EMC felt that we needed to boost these property values, so they boosted it. They increased everything by 10%. So your current power plant is insured for $8.5 million on this proposal, what you guys have, but it's... Okay, the proposal's $8.5 million, the current value is $7.9 million, so EMC thought it needed to be increased 10%. But they truly, if we want to find out truly how much that power plant is gonna cost to replace, they need to go out there and measure it and do an actual write-up. And I don't know the answer to that, and that's what I told Marshall, is I have no idea. EMC just felt that $7.9 million was light since it was that four years ago, three years ago, but we need to get an actual number if... Because I mean, like Marshall and I were talking, if that thing goes and we're a million dollars short, that's not gonna be good. I mean...
Out of looking through everything, that's the biggest thing I've seen personally that I had a question on. I just don't know if we can replace that for $8.5 million, and that is basically the hub of this town. I mean, that's where we generate our power, that's where we make our money, and if it's gone and it costs us an additional $2 million, where are we coming up with that money to fix it?
Assuming that $7.9 was correct also four years ago.
Assuming that that was correct, I mean...
It wasn't put on until...
Right, but even at that, we've never really had a cost analysis of what it would cost.
When we had it with EMC, it was $7.9, so they just took that straight across. So you're right, he's right too, that John's right, that there's no guarantee that it was done correctly back even years ago, back, you know, as far back as when the Sterling Agency had it years ago. We don't know. It would be beneficial to do, EMC's not gonna charge a dime to do that, and then we'd know that the number's correct.
I just know that when we had talked about adding another generator to it and what it was gonna cost, and I'm thinking, what we got now, if we were gonna spend a million or $1.5 million or whatever to update our power plant, can we really rebuild it if it's completely wiped out for $8.5 million? I think, I mean, me personally, I would like to see us at least do a cost analysis on it out of anything.
How much will that increase the premium if we go up, say, to $10 million or something? I mean...
Not a lot.
Not a lot.
Far, far less than what it would cost for you to come up with the $2 million. That was us to you.
Well, and that's my...
No, but I mean, seriously though, I mean, if you're $2 million short, that's gonna be a lot bigger deal than to add $2 million to that property value. It's not gonna be that much more to add to. Now, if we doubled it, obviously, you know, it'll start to add up a little bit, but an extra million or two's not gonna be a big deal.
Does that give us the... Does it tell us what that particular one cost, does it?
No, it just tells you per policy, so that output policy's 22. I'm gonna... I don't know. I don't even wanna say. I think it's gonna cost, it would cost another couple thousand bucks at least, I would think, to add a couple million to it, but I mean...
But I think a couple thousand a year is pretty cheap if it was to cost us another $2 million to replace it. My thoughts, anyway.
Because part of that $22,288 is the equipment breakdown portion of that, so that $22,000 is not all property rate. It's equipment breakdown, which is like $12,000 of it, so $10,000 is the property premium, so if you take the $10,000 out of the eight, I mean, it, yeah, I mean, $1,500, two grand for an increase of an extra million, a million and a half or two. It would be advantageous to do that, whether you switch to EMC or stay at the pool, I mean, honestly.
I agree.
So the last thing I have really is, there's two things. I want you guys to remember that there's a very good chance you're going to get $10,000 back or more at the end of each year with, in a dividend check. So we're coming in about the same price, $87,000. I think you guys are at $88,000 is what, $88,000 and some change is what I've got figured. And then you guys are gonna get at least $10,000 if not more. The city that I compared to is a little, they're right over $80,000 in premium, and you guys are $87,000, so I mean, it could be upwards of $15,000 in the dividend, 10 to 15. So in those odds of getting that are very high. I mean, they've paid it out 32 out of the last 35 years. So again, I mean, we're giving you, we're covering the same things and we're, in theory, gonna do it for a fair amount less premium, but we can't guarantee that the dividend. But I mean, the chances are good that it will be there. And that's on that second page.
What does our insurance premium?
We need to know about people first. If they're not renewed till I want. And so the camera project that Alan and I have been working on that we, we're gonna present, also got all of the information because basically with the pool, we have lost credit. I don't remember what it's called, lost credits or some, income loss credits. It's basically the money out there with the insurance that we can use for security purposes or just different things. And so when Jason was here last time and we went out to the shooting range, Alan and I and Jeff were talking about being able to update the cameras and getting a few more cameras to cover some of the places. So we've been working on that and it's been kind of a chore, but we're getting there and I'm waiting for invoices or, I guess, quotes to bring to you guys, but we haven't got anything yet and we got put on hold for quite a while. And so we're still just waiting for that, but we have until June 30th to be able to use those credits, but we would forfeit them if we didn't have them used by then.
So when do we need to make a decision on insurance?
Tonight.
If you want to switch.
The reason is because you gotta give 90 days written notice to NPR. That's why. I mean, otherwise it wouldn't be quite as urgent. Right, Jamie, 90 days notice.
What happens if we have you go ahead and have a valuation done on our power plant and it comes back? Will we just have to, they'll just add that in after we've already?
I mean, it's just an endorsement, so we can increase the value of any property at any time. So it, yeah, I mean, we can do it as quickly as we want to do it if I'm instructed to do it, but it can be at, it can be changed at any point.
Right.
The property value of a building.
So if we, if you guys were to vote on that tonight and approve it and we give our 90 days, are we still within that threshold to use that money or does that get shut off?
He said that we have to, but yeah, we have to, like, we have to do the project and then they reimburse us, so.
Because I know we are in need of cameras. I mean, we've had a couple people sneak up to the PD being upstairs, upstairs, one had a gun, you know, on their thigh rig holster and was standing at our door, and we never even knew they came up the stairs because they got up them so quietly. So, you know, it's important. We needed the cameras so that we can see when we're in the office if somebody's coming up the stairs, but, you know, if we just have to have the...
What do you think the value of that camera credit or that credit is?
It's just under $10,000.
Is that how much you plan on spending?
No, I was actually working with...
Or don't really know.
I have no idea because for so long we were working with Randy and he was gonna do it, and then it ended up where he wasn't able to, and so then I reached out to...
GBT?
GBT, and they came out and looked at everything, but I just, I haven't got the bid. They said they've been super busy with security and stuff, so I'm waiting on that. And then in the midst of all of that, Randy got it to where he can actually do that, so I will have two different bids. But like I said, it's just been, we've been working on this since, I think he came out in October to look at the shooting range.
Yeah, but we had started, we started way even before that.
Yeah, it's just, it's...
But if we're still good, I mean, if we have until June, then I think we can get it done, so.
Yeah, we just have to do it and then show like the paid invoice and then they would reimburse us, so.
But if we switch, that won't, we'll still get that credit?
I'm thinking you give the 90 days, that's...
Yeah, I would...
I would bet you maybe that's not gonna...
I mean...
They're not giving it away.
I guess I do have a question, not that it's super important, but like Jubilee is covered through, is Jubilee be covered through you guys?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Jubilee's listed in the general liability portion, it's listed as...
And then you have the shooting range on there?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Those have been the two newer things that we talked about, because I didn't realize Jubilee needed insurance.
Okay, council.
Well, here's the only other thing that I'll throw out there. If you guys run into a jam with your $10,000 credit, we'll cover whatever your cost of your cameras are if that is the only thing that's impeding you guys potentially making a change on insurance. I mean, that shouldn't be the... I mean, you guys shouldn't forego potentially saving money, being able to move to an insurance company just for fear that you won't get your upwards of $10,000. I don't know what the number is, I don't know what the quotes will be, but we'll make that right. That's the least I can do. That's pretty simple.
Hey, council, what do you think?
I'm in favor of going ahead with Act 360 on our insurance and having an evaluation done on our power plant. That's my opinion on it. Put that in the form of, I'll put that in the form of a motion.
This is for, it's, I mean, you gave him everything to where we go. Okay.
I mean, as good as you can...
As current, to date, as it's ever been, I guess.
As good as you can compare apples to apples with the pool and an insurance.
Yes, no, I agree. Just everything's on there, I guess. I mean, our inventory list and everything.
Yeah, I gave him an update as good as I know it, that we've been, I've been trying to work on it the last several years.
Not to interrupt, guys.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
You're doing it today.
Yep, I will send out tomorrow.
And I'll get with Jamie to finalize things prior to the April 1st deadline, so.
Good.
And I would go ahead and get that valuation.
Yeah, I'll get that order too to get them coming on that, yep.
Kind of let us know what that's gonna be, if they're covered or not.
Right, right. And I mean, maybe it comes in, I doubt it comes in lower, but who knows? But at least we'll know that it's insured value.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, excellent.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
All right, moving on. Department heads, electrical department, Jeff is not here. Do we have anything from Jeff?
No.
Okay. Water department, is Jason here?
The only thing I really need to do is just get that drought ordinance done, but I see she has it down on the bottom there of old business stuff. As far as that, I own nothing else.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Jason?
Hey, did you guys, you did see his, kind of his plan of not just the water department but the street department?
Looks good, Jason.
Good job, Jason.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Let's see, moving on, the street department, do we have any report on that? Already have? Nothing, okay. Anything from the Brenton Administrator Lisa? Okay.
She's still, and I'm sure with everything going on, those signs are probably at the bottom of everyone's list, so. It's at home $18,000, she wrote.
Interesting. Okay, moving on. Police chief, Chief Adams.
Just a couple things. One, I talked to Jamie the other night and I talked to the mayor. As far with everything on the coronavirus going and the PD, we're not gonna respond to EMS calls that are anything of the symptoms of the coronavirus, so there's nothing we can do. So if it's just a sick call, that somebody's running fever, you know, anything like that, there's nothing we can do. We'll still go to EMS calls that are, you know, strokes, heart attacks or an injury or anything like that, we're still gonna go to those, but there's nothing for us. You know, even the full EMS crew doesn't go into the house now, so there's really no reason for an officer to go and just walk into the house and go, "Yeah, okay, well, we'll wait for an ambulance together," and that's it. So we're gonna kind of start that. Another thing we're gonna start doing with, now I guess school gonna be out for the rest of the school year, we're gonna try and look at the, any patterns that we need so we can change up our hours a little bit more if we start having local problems later at night, different things like that. Another thing, we're starting next month is called a community outreach incentive, so each officer will be responsible. They'll have a form they have to fill out. We'll have to go to one business or one residence per shift. They can do more, but then they'll document it, and that way at the end of the year, we'll know how many either businesses or residents that we stop for 10, 15 minutes to see what's going on and get more out in the community and do some stuff. But we have a way to track it and make sure that all the businesses are getting hit, not just the select few that that's where you hang out at and then you consider that to be your time. So the other thing I wanted to do for the council was Dustin's here for tonight, this Dustin Belton, our new hire, so 122, but he wanted to meet the council, so I wanted to bring him in and introduce him, but other than that, that's all I got.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for chief?
The dog?
Oh, yeah, so we're still on track, 29th, go down there and get the new dog. Guy in Hutch, Hutch Prison is gonna go down with me. He's a decoy, been to decoy school. I took a bite suit over there to Hutch yesterday, he fit in it perfect, so we'll get it broken in for that week that we're down there, and that way for Ross, he can, it'll fit you good when we get back. But yeah, no, we're still on track, looking good to get Glenn on the 29th.
Okay, anything else? Okay, great. Moving on, fire chief, Chief Sanders.
The only thing I have is the fire department has put, or is in the process of putting together a virus response team. So we've selected four people from this department that if we get called out with EMS to help them get somebody out of a basement or they need lift assist or anything, we'll have those people trained to do that, so.
Okay. Good, it was an informative meeting this afternoon.
Yeah, we did. We also had an LEPC meeting, so we're in the process of getting things for the whole county set and figured out, I guess, if you will put it that way, so.
Good job.
And we'll continue to have those meetings as necessary as things progress.
Excellent. I just wanna say, good job on that meeting today. It was, for me, it was very informative.
Thanks.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for fire chief? Okay, moving on. City Administrator Jamie.
So I put together kind of a response, a response plan for everything going on. It was brought to my attention by ESE that the KCC came out that said you can't shut off utilities till April 15th. We aren't a part of the KCC, but the governor came out and also signed a executive order stating that utilities can't shut off until April 15th. So we're under that, so that's something that we're gonna have to follow. Really, all this is, is just kind of going over our, our goals. I kind of went off of what other cities are doing. You know, we're doing everything that everyone's recommending. I am requesting to shut the front door for a couple weeks. Bills were due. We can't shut people off. We have other options of payment.
A second, Doc.
Yeah, because I've had several sick people in here this week. Someone came in yesterday telling me to use hand sanitizer because she's been sick, so.
I mean, we're just closing the door, but you guys still being here.
Yeah, we'd still be here working, but just the front door would be locked and we would be able to, you know, a lot of our stuff's available online and they can call and we can set up taking care of something that needs taken care of, but just to take those precautions.
You have a drive-through window.
Yeah. Yeah. And you know, Alan, I discussed this with Alan a little bit, we're presenting it to you, and like he had noted, you know, we're not a very big community, we don't have a lot of staff, and if one of us goes down, you know, especially the PD, they're taking their precautions. If one of them goes down, one of them's working 24/7 again, and I mean, it's just not. But I talked to Linda, skating is gonna be closed until further notice. If they're canceling school, she doesn't feel like they need to be skating. I'm gonna coordinate her a little bit more with the private parties because we didn't discuss that when I spoke with her. So that's something that's gonna need to be addressed. And city, I mean, city crew's been pretty, not a lot anyways, so.
I would, I will add that I suspect within probably by the end of the week, this 50 number's gonna drop down to 10. So council needs to decide how they're gonna meet. I don't mean to be doom and gloom. Tracy and I, Tracy, Tracy's my wife. Jamie and I have talked about this, and I think she's exploring, but it may be because of coma, you're gonna have to do a conference call type thing. Whether that means council's here and you have a council call number, all right, conference call number for other people to call in if they can't have access to the video. It's uncharted territory, there's no guidelines as of this afternoon that we can follow. There's nothing in statute, there's no cases, but something, and I think you're just gonna have to let her figure it out if you need.
It might even have to be where it's like a Facebook Live where people can comment.
I mean, if it was just us and then the camera here, can't we just do that?
You could.
The department heads just call in? What's that?
You could, unless somebody here gets sick. I mean, you could, yeah.
I'm saying, just keep it to normal and just have all the department heads call in to the Facebook Live and have a, if anybody...
Would someone have to have it open to the public then?
If somebody's got public comments, they could call ahead of time and you could give them the conference call number. My only concern with just posting a conference call number is anybody anywhere in the world could call in and disrupt your meeting, and I'm sure there's people that may wanna do that, but it's just, it's just kind of fluid right now as far as what that's gonna look like, but it can be done. We have a conference call line we can use for the office here for your charge. I do not want that posted.
Right.
So if we need be, you could use our office as a line as long as it's not circulated in the public.
Yeah, don't mean to be doom and gloom, but it's definitely something we have to be...
Well, we have to safeguard all of us in here, and we also have to safeguard anybody that does come in here. And I think having the department heads either conference call or calling in with Facebook Live or whatever we're planning on doing, I think we need to do that. It's just prudent to make sure that we're keeping everybody safe, but it's also prudent that we make sure that everybody in this community is being informed on everything that's being, that's taking place in here. I'm not sure how everything works with Facebook Live. I've only did it a couple times and I wasn't even really doing it myself, it was somebody else doing it. But if you can get that worked out, and I know that at some point you can disable certain, you can disable comments until we can open it up for citizens' comments, am I correct?
That I...
I think you can, but you might wanna look into that, so. Anyway, that's an option that we can look into, so we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, so. Okay, anybody have any questions for Jamie? Moving on, city attorney.
Hold on.
Do you want, like, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, it's okay with me if you wanna close the office and, you know, still, still taking phone calls and still pass the bill through the door. I mean, yeah.
Definitely. And I mean, you know, if people, I'm more able to work with people when they call and communicate than after the fact when it's, you know, but I wasn't necessarily for this mandating not being able to shut off, but we'll deal with that when we get, when we have to.
Yeah, I mean, I think honestly that there probably needs to be a motion and a vote.
To approve this plan?
Because I, I've put a few things that, from the, I mean, I've been trying to direct people, like, I've had three or four phone calls today about rumors and this and that, and I'm trying to update people as much, but I don't wanna post a lot. I just...
So John, we're gonna need a motion on City Hall closing until further notice on that.
Do you want them to just adopt the plan as drafted? I mean, I, there's no, we don't have a resolution or anything of that nature. I don't necessarily, I don't know whether you need a resolution to adopt the plan, but I think you need to vote to make decisions.
And if you need, if you wanna add, like, I mean, if you wanna add a...
Wait for a second. Can we just, can we just make this for until the next council meeting?
Yeah.
I mean, who knows where we might go.
Can we go?
And I was gonna put like days, but I just, I didn't...
John, until we meet at next meeting, can we just go ahead and authorize her to keep these doors closed until we make it official?
And it wouldn't be reevaluated all of a sudden?
Yeah, as long as there's a motion, yeah. But let's just put it in the form of a motion and adopt to get city staff the authorization to remain open, but to lock the doors and service people at the front door, basically.
Okay.
I'd make that a motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thanks, guys. As far as calling a meeting by conference call, I don't need, I don't think the city needs to do anything. I think you just call the meeting as you would, you put out the schedule that says, set up the address here, you just say how people can access the open meeting. I think that's how we do it. I think that's how we do it.
All right.
Yeah, we haven't had too many, like, across our, our city clerk list, or we haven't, meetings haven't even been, it's, it's really been about city halls being open or not and...
Yeah, and I think courts are gonna shut down, so I'm not sure how many big challenges. If you call the open meeting, say, open meeting.
And he just said they sent home 18,000, was it 18?
That's what my news email got, I get, says 18,000.
18,000 state employees.
So, it's included in the state employee.
Okay. Sanders, no, anybody have any questions for Jamie? Okay, moving on, city attorney, John.
Well, along those lines, if the courts, district court is shut down, it may be that we, of course, we're only meeting monthly for municipal court anyways, that I might continue things for a month. I'll have to visit with municipal court judge. I've got the authority to dismiss cases and refile them when, when I can, so that might be another option. So, it may be, we may go a month without court, and I'll just work with Alan and the judge on that.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for John? Okay, moving on to old business. Anybody have any comments, questions regarding anything on old business?
Did the Whitsoner get done then over the weekend?
No. Ben's still over there working on it as far as I know. I think the, I think the trailer is out there. I think I saw it out there yesterday.
Sorry about that. Well, old business, we got anything on that?
Um, can I take West Street off, or should I wait?
Um... Yeah, I don't know why you can't. I think we can take West Street off.
Rusty's gonna...
Well, we're gonna discuss it in new business, so.
Okay.
I guess we can, we can tell him then.
Yeah.
And then, do you want me to wait to take the utility truck off until it's delivered? They said it was in production, so...
A lot of strange things happened in the last couple of years.
For that, sure.
Sure.
I'll leave it on that. That's mine.
Anything else on that? Okay. All right, if there's no questions, other, further questions on old business?
When you do...
Oh, my, yeah.
And then it come up.
Is everybody okay with the ordinance, I guess?
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to approve ordinance 1070-20.
Second. Yeah, a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, moving on to new business. Ohio Township Meeting.
You guys kind of got the list, me and, I, me and Kyle met with them Thursday night, was it Kyle? Last Thursday? This is just the stuff we discussed, kind of some of the potential work that they're gonna do to the streets. You know, they want the manholes and vows and stuff marked for the first time so they know where they're at, which is gonna take city crews to do that.
Have you showed this to Jason already?
I don't, no. I mean, I just attached it to the counter packet. I don't know if we've got all that on the GPS stuff or not. Jason, do you know?
The manholes and stuff? Yes, we do.
So, we can maybe give them like a printout of everything south of First Street and it shows exactly, and maybe have to go around and show them. They asked if we could, you know, if they needed some material for a street or something, if the city could load it in their dump truck. They'd spread it and do all the work, but just save one guy from back and forth all the time or whatever.
Do you have this list right now, Jason, or no? Why don't you look at it and see if you see anything, if you see a problem?
You need it?
I already did. I just need, I think he's kind of in charge of the roads right now.
Is there anything you guys see?
This very last is the dumping limbs off of the tree dump. I mean, that's just, I mean, who knows?
Yeah, I don't, that, that can't be on there.
So, okay, so here, here's the whole explanation. They've got one landowner that just throws a complete fit about his trees when they trim them, of them putting them back on his property.
Yeah, and that is absolutely not our problem.
And that's what I said, but the biggest thing is, is because if I remember right, we're on our last pit out at the tree dump that we can legally dig.
Correct.
And that's what I told him. I said, you know, that's the biggest thing for me. I said, it's not so much dumping a pickup load of tree limbs in there, it's that, that is our last pit that we can dig out there.
It's precedent of past trouble that...
But, and that's the other thing. We've also had other people that have gotten trouble for dumping tree limbs in there if we let them. I do know it's not a deal breaker.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that can be on there.
Yeah, I just leave that off there. You know, I mean, I don't know what else, if, if you guys have any questions about any of that stuff. Me and Kyle seem to think that most of that was pretty straightforward and reasonable, their requests, you know? They only have about $5,000 budgeted for rock. So, and it's kind of like, we told them, you know, that's probably not necessarily a big deal, you know, as far as them paying for rock. I guess we'll, if we need it. Rusty seemed to think there, there really wouldn't be much needed, you know?
Yeah. I, I, I'm okay, everything on there is pretty straightforward. I just think we gotta take that city dump, that, we just can't, that'll open a can of worms that we can't deal with.
And it will. And I, I think they're fine.
And we talked, when we told them that, they understood. They understood. I'm sure so.
I get it.
It's not gonna say.
Jason, did you see anything?
No, I was just, I, I said something about cleaning the basins out. I just hope they don't fill them in every time, but that's okay.
Well, no, and that's, and that's why, okay, so that, that part of it, you know, like where our concrete or where it wraps around and stops on a dirt road and we've got a basin there. Rusty just thought maybe if the city crews could go down there before he got everything started and just kind of take shovel and get that stuff cleaned away from it to where it would drain. He said he can do it with a grader, but then he also, you know, stands, taking the risk of tearing up the, the curbing or, you know, something like that.
Right.
And he said not all of them need it, just a few of them. And I guess it'd just be something to maybe kind of keep an eye on, and I told him he could just always call in and say, hey, you know, we got a bunch of stuff that's built up in this one, it's not draining.
Right. No, and, yeah, it looks good.
Do we need to run?
It's up to you, I guess, I am, was, kind of, I mean, if...
A motion to let them maintain the dirt roads on the south side of First Street or...
Well...
If we don't keep a record of that stuff, I mean, I guess, yeah.
Maybe they didn't even have a contractor.
That's not a gentleman's agreement to run it and do it.
I mean, I kind of have the opinion, let it start to go and see what happens.
So, a consensus would be fun.
Yeah.
Okay, so everyone say, okay with this?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. All right.
It gets a little rusty now.
I'll give you guys a free some.
Well, I'm not arguing.
And so, I would say that we could take West Street off of the old business?
Yeah.
You guys okay?
He's, he's got a bit to say.
Okay.
Tasked us, Chris.
Okay, moving on to the next thing, citywide cleanup. What's the deal with that?
So, I've had about 50 calls asking when citywide cleanup is, and I called Darren because it's really coordinated through the county, not the city. And he told me that he'll be going to commission meeting tomorrow to request city cleanups not happen anymore. I believe Stafford is not doing it, you know? I'm also under the impression that the county is on their last area. Do you know anything about, I mean...
Yeah, county's on their last pit out there as well.
So, um, we do provide a dumpster. I'm just letting you guys know, because I do know the amount of phone calls I've had. Whether it's gonna be an issue that goes up to you guys, I don't know, but I just wanted it on your radar that more than likely, I, I mean, I don't know that commission would be again, be saying, yeah, let's do citywide cleanup, because it's the city's problem, so. But we do provide the dumpster, so I guess if people complain, you can always remind them that they can take their stuff down there, but, and, um, the, the school is having a cleanup day, or like the community service day, so the people that don't...
Maybe. Probably not this year.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Probably not.
Let's kidding. School's canceled. So, yeah, I don't know. Like, the people, the older people that can't, or the people that don't have trucks, so I don't know.
Yeah, that's, that's the only thing I would say. I mean, some people actually, you know, even though I don't have this problem, I can load it up with my pickup.
Right.
Some people that are older, they even have pickup, they can't get back in there, they don't have a pickup.
That's my concern.
It is nice, and I did see this one, asked the commissioner, you know, what he thought. He said, you know, I, I'm very much in favor of keeping the citywide cleanup going, because he said something they've had problems with is getting all the citywide cleanups from the county all at the same time and bringing all this stuff at the same time, which I don't know, you know, like, it was a state-owned national staff or being the same week.
And I thought they coordinated it that way.
I, I don't know.
Is the way that I understood it. So, I mean, and maybe we'll still have it, but...
I'm, I'm sure in favor of it. I, I mean, we're, we're all about cleaning up the town, and I don't think we need to take away our, that's probably our primary...
Well, we've hauled two houses out there today.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
We have three more to go.
Three more tomorrow.
Yeah, I, I'm...
I mean, just to me, I don't think a few citywide cleanups is gonna fill up a landfill, you know what I mean? They're, they're gonna have to expand that landfill no matter what, you know? I mean, it's... Well, when you consider that a lot of people... Cut out the citywide cleanups is... Pass on me. When you consider that you have a lot of people using this dumpster back here, and then we've, in the past two years, we've had quite a few people putting stuff out. I don't think that we're going to fill it up by...
Our trash, our trash guys ask us how, how John produces so much trash a lot, so...
What, we usually do that in April, is the first we appear.
Really, they just coordinate, Darren, Darren sets it and we go with it, so...
But you, to inform the public, I mean, through a bill, we would have to know by...
To get it in the April bill?
Today?
No. No, we can get it on the newsletter.
Seventh is our next meeting?
Yeah, we do, to get it on the newsletter, we send out bills, we'll print out newsletters either Friday or Monday.
But we won't have that meeting.
Right, but...
You can decide that, if the commissioners say.
Yeah. If they go with it...
I'd say if the commissioners go with it, we go with it.
There you go.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, it's true.
I was just letting...
Make the date up.
Yeah. I was just letting you guys know that it was gonna be discussed, and, I mean, I've had...
But I don't want the commissioners, if they're having a meeting, is it tomorrow?
Yeah.
If they have a meeting tomorrow, I don't want them to be thinking we don't run it, so you should reach out to Darren, I think, tomorrow morning.
No, but I could call the commissioner after meeting and I can tell him that we're in favor of it, if, if that's what they want to do, we're...
Do die. Because I know...
Not too hard, very much.
Yeah. I mean, I, I had them planned on going in the morning, but I can sure reach out to one of them and, you know, tell them that the city is interested if they do it, that we would like to participate in it, because it does benefit us.
Right.
Just running it to the...
Any more discussion on that? Okay, moving on, Jubilee update.
Um, we have sent out sponsor letters for sponsors to start coming in, and we've been working on getting some of this stuff secured, so hopefully we won't be limited in crowds, I guess, in many.
Do you have quite a bit invested already?
Everything, everything that we have set, I don't know that would cost, like, I don't know that it would cost us at this point. It's, it's, you know, going forward is when we're gonna have to start securing some of this stuff, so...
What's, what's the main...
Um, Jubilee will be the 23rd and 24th, I think, this year. No, 22nd, 23rd. Sorry. So...
Got a little time, but not much.
Yeah, kind of proceeding with caution, but...
A lot's changed in the last two weeks, and I'm sure a lot more will change in the next two weeks. Hopefully, hopefully we'll start treating them the other way, maybe.
Yeah, and that's definitely gonna be your guys' call, um, and we'll, we'll probably need to be discussing that at both the April meetings, because I don't want to keep putting efforts into it if we're not gonna be able to have it.
Sure. Wait, what, do you have to have people carnival, all that kind of stuff?
I have the carnival secured, and I have my bands. I have my, a big band and then, um...
So, long...
Someone opening.
People need to secure my bands, you've already done that.
Their schedules are opening up.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like a band cruise.
So, I mean, it, yeah, because I didn't secure the monster truck, and that was, that was a pretty big expense, but we decided to not, not continue with that just because of the expense, and we won't be, but, yeah, I, but we also left, the, the theme is back in time, so we've, we've opened it up to, to try to do like old-fashioned kind of stuff that maybe wouldn't have cost us as much money, so...
When you have donations, do you keep track of it in case you have to give it back?
Yep. Yep, we, and if people do donate, you know, if people ask you about that, if people donate and they, they would like their donation back, we do keep track of it and we could give it back, or they can keep it in there and it can be used for, because we'll have the car show in August and for Christmas, and then Jubilee. That's where we are on that, but I'm definitely leaving it up to you guys to decide if we are gonna be able to have that or not, because...
It may not be up to us.
Right, right.
But, yeah, I see your...
Yeah, I'd rather have...
Yeah.
A consensus or a, a vote, then it'd be enough to me.
Right. Okay, anybody have any more, any questions regarding Jubilee? Okay, moving on, resignation of Steven Sheets.
So, do they need to do, I didn't have that at the last meeting, do they need to accept those resignations from everyone?
I'm not certain what you're talking about.
When someone resigns?
You can have a written one right here, right now? Well, I'd, I'd make a motion to accept Steven Sheets' resignation.
Second.
It's just what we've always done, but I didn't know if it was actually...
There's certain reasons why you do, but you don't have to.
All right, I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, we...
Can I make an addition to the agenda?
Yeah.
The sidewalks in the square. I forgot about them.
Are you gonna get them for that?
I forgot about it, so I can show it up. So, that is what you guys requested to be bidded, bid. So...
So, the only bid we have?
Yeah.
And then, the east one? The east?
I don't know. I read it.
Does it say, I didn't say anything?
How's he coming along on the county shop?
Well, I don't think he's... Between weather and personnel issues, yeah.
And it's, I mean, it's not something we have to do right now either. We can, I, I did it because I had put it on the calendar when you guys discussed it and...
Sure. I think we accept the bid, and if you don't have it done before Jubilee, we don't rush I think we accept the bid, and if you don't have it done before Jubilee, we don't rush it, but.
Yeah.
I mean, it's good for sixty days, but doesn't mean we can put the kibosh on it if it's gonna interfere with Jubilee. You can do it after the fact. Yeah. I'd make a motion to approve the bid from Mansell Construction, mounted a lot of thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars to replace sidewalks when he says we're going into the fountain, after the fountain has been completed.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
After in capital letters?
All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, moving on, we have a ten minute executive session to discuss potential higher percent to the non-elected personnel matter, and this is, you call this one in?
Uh, yes, with the police chief.
Okay, so we want to, everyone including police chief?
So moved.
Okay. I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor? Motion carries. We'll resume at eight o'clock. Call this meeting back to order.
I'd make a motion to hire President Neemick as a part-time police officer starting at fourteen dollars a day.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, we have a five minute executive session to discuss an employee valuation present to the non-elected personnel matter. Who do you want in here?
Uh, Tate.
Everyone at the table? Okay.
So moved.
I have a motion, give me a second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries.
I was gonna ask if you want to.
Okay, we'll resume at eight oh six.
If you want five minutes on it, it's, it's another evaluation.
Okay, call this meeting back to order.
I'm wishing to approve the raise for the valuation for Jeff Williamson of two and a half percent to bump him to twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Did you raise your hand? Did you raise your hand?
Did you raise your hand?
Did you abstain?
Okay, we have another five minute executive session to discuss employee evaluations present to the non-elected personnel matter. Who do you want in there? Everyone at the table?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion on the table, give me a second.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. We'll resume at eight eleven. Call this meeting back to order.
I'd make a motion to give Chief Alan Adams a three percent raise based off the evaluation from twenty-four oh four to twenty-four seventy-six.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, we have another fifteen minute non-elected personnel regarding personal matters executive session. Who do you want in this?
Council, mayor, and attorney.
Okay.
And we can probably just go ten minutes.
Go ten minutes? Okay.
We don't need fifteen.
We'll go ten, ten minutes on this one. Okay, give me a second on that?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. We'll resume at eight twenty-two. Call this meeting back to order. We have one more ten minute executive session regarding non-elected personnel and personnel matters. Who do you want in this?
Everyone at the table.
Everyone at the table.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. We'll resume at eight thirty-three. Yep, so we'll discuss it then. Call this meeting back to order. Do we have any more business? Okay, having said that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.